Okay, today is Tuesday, August 15th. I called this village board meeting order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Bush?
Here.
Trustee Jerish?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Prakno?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Okay, tonight we have invocation from Pastor Petusnick at the Christus Victor Lutheran Church, and we'll do the pledge allegiance. Everyone, please stand. Pastor, microphone's all yours.
London and generous God, we begin this village board meeting with gratitude and thanks to you for this very nice summer we all enjoyed. We lift up our gratitude to you for all the good services and things that are happening in this community. We are grateful for Rainbow Falls, where this year again so many children and adults splashed in the water and found refreshment and relaxation in these warm summer days. We are thankful for the summer concerts, where so many people came and enjoyed the music and being outdoors. We are grateful for the farmers market each Saturday, where people can buy fresh and healthy produce. We are thankful for the Hattendorf Center and the caring place at Christus Victor, where seniors receive care and love. We are grateful for the Elk Grove Care Program, where people with addiction find real help and healing. We are grateful for all the services that Elk Grove provides. We are thankful for all our firefighters and police officers who keep us safe. And we are thankful for all the good work and leadership that the trustees and Mayor Johnson provide for this community. As we look ahead, we are grateful that after three years, we can start up again Pats Homeless Shelter at Christus Victor with the help of many volunteers and the support of the village. Whenever we share love with our brothers and sisters in need, God's love extended and touches more lives for the wellness of all. We are all called in our service for this community to extend God's love with our care and resources. Guide the trustees tonight in their meeting to be a beacon of light for this community. It has now taken a moment of silence as we remember the many people who lost their lives on the Hawaiian island of Maui through this tragic fire that destroyed a large part of the island. For God be with all these people and bring real help to them. In your holy name we pray, amen.
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 Thank you. Flags to my right. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Folks, please be seated. Pastor, hang on a second.
So Pastor, first off, thank you again for, uh, is it on?
I don't hear it. Yes.
That better? Okay. Again, having Pats start up again. Please, anyone at Elk Grove that wants to volunteer their time, you know, this is a great, Pats, we've missed it over the time with COVID and all that. It's coming back. These help people that are in need, these help people that have no place to go. And for one night, they get a chance to go to a nice warm bed to sleep in, clean up, have something to eat, you know, get everything good. So, anyone that's around, please, reach out to Christus Victor and help them out. Also, on behalf of Christus Victor, on Sunday, August 27th, from four to six, you're doing a community outreach pasta dinner to raise money for their Thanksgiving meal program they have. And Pastor, talk a little bit about what you're doing.
Yeah, so since this is our 20th anniversary, so for 20 years now, we provide a free meal for the entire community. People come from everywhere, with buses actually, and they get a free Thanksgiving meal that the community gives donations to, but we are cooking it and putting it together and sharing it. So it's a great outreach for the community and share the joy of Thanksgiving. And so many of you as well can participate, and many community businesses are giving donations and help so that it is a beautiful event, and it touches really a lot of people's life and fills their stomach, and they are all very, very happy. So, thanks also for your support for that.
So, keep in mind, Christus Victor and all this, all the hard work. Pastor?
Thank you, thank you. You have a good meeting, Mayor. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Okay, we move on now to the approval of the minutes of July 18th, 2023.
I, I move that we approve the minutes of July 18th, 2023, as presented and dispensed with the reading. Second?
Motion by trustee Prakno, second by trustee Miller. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the director show an ass approval. Move on now to the mayor and board of trustees report. I apologize in advance, having meetings once a month. I got a little buildup, a lot of things been happening in Elk Grove, so bear with me and go through things. Anyone that's been to the village hall lately knows, out in the foyer across from the police desk, we have a Narcan vending machine. And we, with the help of Kenneth Young Senator Daryl Pass, works over there helping people with the disease of addiction, remember, the disease of addiction. We have that available for people. And the reason we put outside the police window is all of our police officers are trained to help people that are in need. Remember, Elk Grove Cares Program is revolutionary. Remember, this Department of Justice for the United States Government said our program's revolutionary. It's helping save lives, helping bring families back together, making a difference. So, one thing their, their approach is about is putting up a Narcan vending machine. It's free. If you need a Narcan or one Narcan, you can walk up there, push a button, and get it. Our officers are trained, they come out and they say, hey, is everything okay? Do you need assistance? By the way, here's some information about our cares program. Again, we gotta beat that disease of addiction. We can't arrest our way out of this problem. We gotta beat the core of it and that. Well, it just came to our attention a couple of weeks ago that someone had gotten a Narcan kit out of our vending machine for a relative that they were concerned about. And sure enough, whatever, a day or two later, that person OD'd. He applied Narcan that he got from our vending machine, saved the person's life. Saved their life. Gives that person another chance, one at life, but also another chance to try to beat, deepbeat this disease of addiction. So, it's nice to see a direct connection, how it can make a difference, how it can help. So, just want to make everyone aware of that. Good save, and hopefully that young person gets on the road to recovery and all that. Also, this, I'm asking for everyone, please bear with. You know we have a parade coming up on September 16th, and it's the village parade, and we always look for people to help sponsor the parade. This year, our businesses stepped up like never before. Almost $42,000, they donated in sponsorship to our parade, which allows us to expand it, to do more things. So, I always promise everyone that one time before the parade, I would read the name of every business that stepped up, all 68 of them, Mr. Knickerbocker. So, get comfortable, get your pillow out, get your blankie, take a little nap. For the rest of us, bear with me, I'll read these, but if I do, we thank them all for stepping up. Arctronics, Arrow Road Construction, Castle North, Castle Chevrolet North, Central State Signs, Country Inn and Suites, Cosini, Diamond Truck and Trailer, Elk Grove Chamber Accomplers, George Gold Development, GHC Mechanical, Jerish Bakery. Whoa! Jerry Castle Sun High Lift, JK Cabinetry, Lawrence Foods, Marino's Pizzeria, Materials Science Corporation, North Star Foods, Our Lady of the Blessed Sacrament, the old QR, Palmasian Cynthia Office, Rebocchini Studios, Seco Logistics, Reverend Tony Recovery, Supreme Tamale, Viva Zapata Mexican Food, White Green, ABC Elite, Acme Finishing Company, Advertising Products, AES USA Corporation, Air Products Equipment, Ankle and Foot Surgery. There you go, George, ankle and foot surgery. Barrington Orthopedics, Brittany's Bistro, Brown Commercial Group, BV USA, Karma Optimo Foods, Cell X Consulting Group, Consolidated Color to Design, Delta Precision Circuits, Design House Architecture, Elk Cleaners, Easy Liquors, Fisher Commercial Construction, GNP Realty Partners, Great Wall Seafood LLC, Grove Memorial Chapel, KVC Company, Libra Industries, Mammon Corporation, New Edge Improvement, Nissan International Transport USA, O'Hare Mechanical Contractor, Optimo Automatics, Robuck Truck and Auto, Rose Garden Cafe, Sandy Lano and Associates, Sonico Elk Grove, Super Ego Repair, Surfaces by Pacific, Tasty Catering, Tomy and Associates, Tidwall Roofing and Sheet Metal, Tashima Engineering, Truck Tire Express, Trust Air Cargo, Universal Floor and Wall Systems, Waste Connections, Groot, and WK Installations. We want to thank all of them. Not bad.
You did well.
Pronunciation, what would you say? Impressive?
Kind of a B+ for you, that's good.
Not bad, huh? Okay. We do thank everyone. I didn't see Knickerbocker and Associates anywhere, but we'll work on that one. Did we?
I apparently want to read it again.
So, we do thank everyone. Remember, the parade's coming up, September 16th, down Elk Grove Boulevard. We got a lot of new acts this year, and goes to part of Rotary, or Oktoberfest, Frankie Fest, and Kids Fest, all that, so looking forward to a great time. But again, we can't thank all those businesses that stepped up to make it a better event for all of us. Speaking of Rotary Fest, which I briefly mentioned here, as we know, we had Rotary Fest since our last board meeting. Huge success. Tied to Rotary Fest this year was one of our concerts, which was All American Rejects. That was by far, by far, the biggest concert we've ever had here in Elk Grove. Probably over 20,000 people there. And it was great. Young people, you know, they're great, the young people. You know, they came, they're polite, thankful, it went well. Matter of fact, it went so well that the Rotary Club had their best night, whether it's Friday, Saturday, or this is a Thursday night, best night ever in all the years. They raised more money on that Thursday night than they did Friday and Saturday combined. They still beat it. And they raised the most money they've ever raised in the history of Rotary Club during that Rotary Fest. So, we're very happy they were a part of it. And yes, we're gonna be doing it again next year with a big concert for them. Went very well. We got a letter from them with the numbers today. Almost 80% of all the money they raise at Rotary Fest goes to Elk Grove Village Events, Companies, Charities. You got Kenneth Young, CCC, I mean, all over the place, they're giving money back. They give out $24,000 in scholarships every year out of that money, the Elk Grove Village students. So, it went very well. Like I said, the concerts, beyond belief and unbelievable. So, glad to partner well. And again, all of our concerts this year, we set a record for the number of people coming to our summer concerts. Over 80,000 people. Not one arrest. Not one arrest. In all the years we've done our concerts, which now probably told, if I had over all the years, almost a million people come to our stuff, we've had two arrests. One time, a guy from Niles mooned someone. Deputy Chief Burke remembers that one, he handled that case. He's in charge of mooning. And, and then the other time was, two women got in a fight in front of Bret Michaels, right in front of Bret Michaels. Remember, they're in concert, he stops, goes, ladies, are you serious here? Is this really going on? And they would have been fine, except one woman hauled off and hit one of our officers. So, in all the years, that's the only two issue we had. Both times, not Elk Grove people. Not saying other towns aren't good, but not Elk Grove. Luckily, no one from Skokie, so that's a good sign. That's good. I say that because Mayor Van Dusen's here from Skokie, he's got a presentation a little bit, so I can give him a little needling. But we had an unbelievable year. So, I mean, after All American Rejects, we had the Oakridge Boys, and then we had Ann Wilson of Heart after that. So, we had a great lineup this year, great turnout. We thank everyone for being there. I will say this, next year's lineup that we're working on will be our biggest ever. No question, it'll be the biggest lineup we've ever had. Helps a little bit that our good state Senator Laura Murphy got us a $200,000 grant to go in with our funding. So, it's all gonna be part of it. Again, we pay for this from, if you go to our video gaming places, if you stay in Elk Grove Hotel, or you smoke, we say thank you, thank you, thank you. Because that's where all the money comes to put these shows on, including the manpower, the staging, the lights, the bands, everything's paid for out of that fund. So, we thank everyone. So, that came, that we had a good time, and it turned out very well. Also, back on July 23rd, the New Indian Temple that's located on Martin Gill, Rockland Road right there, did the grand opening that weekend. They invited me, I was with Congressman Raja at the event, and a big turnout, actually several thousand people there, and it went very well. We're excited about them opening up, we hope they do well, and again, shows diversity here in Elk Grove. They invested that kind of money for a temple right there, we enjoyed seeing that. Also, we met with Microsoft, and soon we'll be unveiling the last building that's gonna be built in their three building development on Higgins Road. And they'll move along quickly, they already have permits for the second building, that construction starts soon, and the third building on Higgins shouldn't be that far behind. So, that's going well. Also, I want to talk real quick here. We talked about developments, we have a new development coming obviously at Orientite Road in Higgins, the new shopping apartment complex being built. We are doing a naming contest for naming that whole development. You know, I think it was called Elk's Crossing before? Was Elk's Crossing?
Parking shop before that?
And?
Elk Grove Woods?
Elk Grove Woods.
Elk Grove Woods? What was they doing? Parking shop was the original name?
Yeah.
Way back when we were all young. Parking shop. So, we're having a contest. So, you can submit one idea from each residence. We will have winners, and we'll be giving out gift cards. What will happen is, submit your names. We may take a name in its entirety, we may take parts of a couple of names, and we reserve the right to take none of the names. But, we're gonna have a contest. So tomorrow, starting tomorrow, go on Elk Grove's website, elklove.org, and you'll find a click on, where you can submit a idea, and turn them in, all the instructions, all the rules are on there, and just turn them in, and hopefully we'll quit saying the development in Orientite Road in Higgins, and have a name. You have to have everything in by, I think, September 15th? Is that it? September 15th, the start of Oktoberfest, Frankie Fest. So, get that done, and then we'll be able to get the new name out there moving on. Wingspan has been meeting with all the tenants, working out their new leases, and things are going very well. We're excited about that. They're getting ready to get working and rolling, so we're looking forward to that. So, again, a naming contest, so the village gets to be part of that thing too. We also had a meeting with the school district 59, our main elementary school district here in Elk Grove. And one of the things we talked about at length is the SRO officer at the thing. Student, was it student resource?
School Resource Officer.
Student Resource Officer. We have, we've had him for years at the high school, that back when I was at Elk Grove High School, in the seventies we had one. We have one again now at Mead Junior High. The only one we haven't had for long to ever is Grove Junior High. And I know a lot of parents out there have been asking about one, wanting one, needing one. This is your time to get a little involved. The school board of 59 is starting to look at it, but unfortunately, they're gonna drag this out, we fail, too long. They're gonna set committees, have meetings, talk to... Resource officers is, we're not reinventing the wheel here, folks. They're everywhere. Matter of fact, the federal government is setting grants up for student resource officers. So, that's how much the Congress, who can't do anything, can't agree on anything, they agree on doing that. So, we need to put a little pressure, and actually, the board mentioned at the meeting last night, we want to hear from you. Let them know, you want the resource officer, you want them fast. Not next year, not after December, you want them starting this fall. Because remember, student resource officers provide some security, yes they do, but they also provide a bridge with young people. Too many times, young people never see a police officer in a positive light. They always see him in a negative light. They see him pull their parents over, they have to give them a ticket, or they have to make an arrest, something like that. The student resource officers in schools work with young people, talk to them, get along with them. Actually, sometimes they coach. Officer Lancaster, after the school's over, he was coaching wrestling, Mead Junior High was there. So, they really work, get to know the young people, interact in a positive way with young people. So, we don't need the school district who's never had one dragging their feet anymore. So, please, reach out to the school board members, and reach out to Dr. Brezchenhand, the superintendent, who I think is not the biggest supporter from my impression with her. Reach out and let them know, we need this, it's long overdue, it's a matter of safety. And people that have kids at Grove Junior High know what we're talking about. So, please reach out, push them, get going, and stuff like that. Again, we want the police officers to work in a positive way with young people. Real quick story, I apologize. I had a woman come up to me one time, a few years ago, all upset that one of our police officers was not in his car patrolling. I said, well, what's the problem, ma'am? And she goes, well, I saw him out in the basketball court across from my house in the park, shooting baskets with the kids. I said, and the problem is? Well, he should be in his car patrolling. I said, ma'am, did you get me his name and his badge number maybe? She, oh, good, you're gonna contact. I said, you're darn right I'm contacting him. Oh, that's great, I didn't get it, I'm sorry, mayor. I said, you know I'm contacting him, don't you? To yell at the mayor? I said, no, I'm giving him a citation, a good citation. Because that's what we want. The officers reach out, working with young people, playing with them, having fun with them, giving ideas and supporting them. That officer deserved a, say, positive citation for doing that. And that's why SRO officers, they do that greatly in schools today. They help with the level of security, but they also reach out and work with the people. And so, please, reach out and let them know, we want to get that done quickly. Next, every holiday, you know, our officers do a click and ticket. Again, I go over this just because I can't believe people, the officers are out there. You can't miss our police officers as they're watching for this. Yet, we still had 158 seatbelt violations to this day, 24 drivers speeding in front of the officers, can't believe that, 23 using cell phones, that's always a low number in my book. I think everyone's using a cellphone, but causes problems. Three drivers had no license, 13, no insurance, tinted windows, those have become a big thing, aren't they? Way too many, our prosecutor will tell you. And that's dangerous. Tinted windows, two tinted windows are dangerous for everyone involved. Police officers, people in other cars, all that. You gotta have some visibility there. So, Deputy Chief Burke, good job for our guys again, doing that click and ticket program there. We got a letter recently from someone talking about the village. We get a lot of letters, a lot of phone calls, letters, all this, but this one was really nice, talking about police officers, firefighters, Deputy Chief Gack, and go be Public Works guys. Dear Mayor Johnson, I've now had the pleasure of visiting Elk Grove Village outdoor music events on two occasions. Rotary Club event on July 20th, and the most recent event on August 1st with Ann Wilson of Heart. I just want to take a moment to congratulate you. Not only did the event appear to win for local businesses and the community at large, I was most impressed by the police force, as well as your first responders. In a time of burgeoning us versus them perspective, I personally observed true protect and serve mentality from those in uniform. Very impressive. Keep up the good work. Christopher Bruce. So, guys, as I tell people and I say again to the board, we got the finest people, I'm sorry, George, even Skokie, we have the finest people in Elk Grove, and our police, Fire and Public Works, thank them when you see them. They do a phenomenal job. We couldn't have these concerts with that many people coming. We couldn't do all the other events we do in this village without great staff behind it. So, I appreciate this thank you, but trust me, we get a lot of them, I just want to make sure you guys know, they're appreciated. I know we have guys out there tonight, they need to hear that sometimes. Next, we've told you folks millions of times, lock your cars, lock your cars, lock your cars. All over Facebook, all over the place, we had a lot of people contacting, calling police, everything else. One night, there was obviously a group of people coming through the village, looking to steal, break into cars, quick cash for a quick fix, all that going on. We had two cars stolen. One car, they opened the car in the driveway, pushed the remote control, opened the garage door, went into the Explorer, found the purse and keys, took the car and took off with it. We had another car, they had keys in the driveway, still in the car, they took off with that. Both cars, I believe, were recovered, both cars recovered. All the other cars broken into were unlocked. Folks, I've said this so many times, lock your doors. We've got countless videotapes of people going down streets from doorbells, ringing doorbells, where you can see them trying door handles, they're locked, they move on. They don't want to get caught, they don't want problems, they don't want issues. All the cars that night broken into and stolen were unlocked, the two stolen cars had keys left in them. Again, do that. My own son, my one son, his car driveway across from my other son, the car that was locked, Brittany had a car locked, checked, nothing. Went to Junior's car, unlocked, took his wallet right away. So, again, they made the mistake. Please, lock your cars. These are people going, they do a different town probably every night, and again, looking for quick cash for a quick fix. So, please, lock your cars, and you eliminate 99% of the break-ins in Elk Grove, and that's true in every town. I'm sure Mayor Van Dusen said the same thing in Skokie. Make it difficult, they don't want any problems. So, do that. Last and not least, I want to say as the summer winds down, on behalf of the board, we thank everyone in the community. We had another great summer. Play Party Pickton went well, our fifth anniversary Elk Grove Cares, the concert series Unbelievable, Rotary Fest, all the events this year went off the hitch, we started Memorial Day and all that, we got Oktoberfest coming. But again, we had a great season. Elk Grove is a place to be in the summer, we all know that, a lot of good times. So, I want to thank everyone from staff, Mr. Roan, Mr. Roan, from staff down, you guys did an A-plus job. It's why people like Elk Grove so much. Matter of fact, Mayor Van Dusen asked if there's any homes for sale in Elk Grove, he's kind of looking around, so he's getting ideas. So, again, thank you, Elk Grove. Make us all proud, and we're proud to represent you, and we always take that with great respect. So, again, thank you for that. So, I know Jeff's not here, was it okay? Not too bad, or?
I thought it was fine.
I thought you did a great job.
Good. Make sure you text him, let him know it went good. So, I've been talking, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, I have to swear one person, would you mind if I? Thank you. So, the library had elections this past April with everybody else, and no one ran for the four-year unexpired term of trustee Jerish, because trustee Jerish ran for the village board. So, we had someone that applied for it, and she was chosen by the board members, and tonight, we want to say, Ms. Catania, you want to come down? So, she will be taking over the library board position. Now, that'll be for two years, right? Then you have to run the open election for two more years than you running, so.
Correct.
But I know you'll do fine, and I thank you for volunteering. It means a lot for the community, makes a better village, so thank you very much. So, if you'd please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Selah Catania.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Library trustee.
Library trustee.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Library trustee.
Library trustee.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Come on.
My family's here, my son and my husband, and I've got support from some of the library and a good friend of ours, she is the one who really encouraged me. So, Erin Dulcie, thank you so much for this, and thank you for the board for your support and your trust, and for the honor of giving me this opportunity to help and volunteer and continue your great work and support the library staff who have done a great job. And, you know, I hope to continue supporting them and making sure that they continue to get the amazing awards that they have. So, thank you so much.
So, what made you want to get involved with the library?
I've worked and designed libraries for a very long time, and being part of the Elk Grove community, I really wanted to support them in any way that I can, having, you know, some of the experience and knowledge from one side of working in the public sector world. I really wanted to bring the other side and learn more about, you know, how libraries really run, and how to support the community, and how I can, you know, best give any of my knowledge back to helping everybody, helping our library, and supporting the community that needs, you know, a lot of information, different information, different levels. a lot of information, different information, different levels of information, not just for the young, but for the old. And to encourage our students to really utilize the library and all of the programs and, you know, just information that's out there.
I think it's great you're doing it. Library's phenomenal. We got the best around.
Yes, we do.
And thank you for volunteering time and the family for allowing her the freedom to do all this and the time. So, before she leaves, she have plenty of these. George, you so know, we give out dark chocolate village logos. And my heart doctor said I could eat dark chocolate, so that's why we do that. So, I'm going to give to you.
Oh, my goodness.
A lot. To carry down.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
To give you all some energy and support.
Thank you.
Well, I tell everybody when they come, because your family took the time and friends come, even library trustees, that Dairy Queen is still open. It'd be awfully nice if you took them to Dairy Queen afterward and thanked them for the time tonight. But joking aside, thank you for all you're doing. I appreciate it. Wish you the best of luck.
It's an honor. Thank you so much. Thank you. Good night.
So, last but not least, he's been very patient, Mayor, come on down. Besides being a great mayor of Skokie, another great town in the area, and like I say, I go there a lot, and I was talking to George about it. My dad's whole family is buried at Memorial Park in Skokie, right across the street from Old Orchard. And so, I tell him, I'm in this town all the time, giving my tax dollars. So, I'm hoping he stops Elk Grove somewhere on the way out, gives some tax dollars back to us. But George's also been running the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County for many, many years, longer than we care to remember sometimes. But SWANK, as it's called, was originally formed by Mayor Zetic, who was the mayor for a long time in Elk Grove here, back in the 70s and 80s, early 90s. There's always an issue about what to do with all our refuse. And for the longest time, we ran out of landfill space to put it. And it actually became very difficult. And so, the first proposal was to build a landfill in Bartlett. And we actually had some land set up and all that. And it was actually going to be, all your waste would be put in cubes and they're going to actually stack more efficiently and put it there. And over time, other avenues opened up. We stepped away from the landfill and went, or from the Bartlett location to another location. But the transfer stations to use to get rid of the waste, we've still built. And it's very efficient. If you ever get a chance to see them, they're unbelievable. The conveyors and how they separate, recycle, all, it's unbelievable. So, George has been the head of that for a group of towns that are part of that. And the towns go from the North Shore all the way throughout Grove, all around. There's how many communities now? 23 communities are part of it. And you say, "Well, why?" Because there's savings in large numbers. And we save a lot of money by using SWANK. And that's why we've done it. And George is from the very beginning, and he's done a great job in his leadership. We're doing well because of it. And he wanted to come by tonight, unbeknownst to a lot of us, so we're looking forward to it. So, Mayor, microphone's all yours.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to have the opportunity to be with you this evening. It's a special pleasure to be able to honor an esteemed colleague and great friend with a proclamation recognizing Mayor Johnson's long service to Elk Grove, our region, and to our state. Also, I wanted to thank the mayor and the board of trustees for loaning us Ray Romo and now Matt Rowan, who both have served on the executive committee of the agency. That's the committee that runs the agency on a day-to-day basis. Matt's on the agency's executive committee now. Ray was chairman of the executive committee. And with your indulgence, I would like to read a proclamation honoring my friend. I'll say a longtime friend. I won't say how long. We both, I had hair at one time and...
Mine wasn't gray.
The mayor's hair wasn't gray then. Whereas Craig B. Johnson has been elected mayor of Elk Grove and has held this distinction since April 22nd, 1997. Whereas while serving as the annual mayor, he has also served as director of the Northwest Municipal Conference, the Northwest Municipal Joint Water Agency, the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County, and also with distinction on the Suburban O'Hare Commission. Whereas, among the many contributions of Mayor Johnson, one that would undoubtedly be among his most satisfying efforts was to encourage successfully the state of Illinois to acquire the bail filled property to which the mayor just referred, a reclaimed abandoned strip mine, converting the property into a beautiful state park named for Illinois State Senator James Pate Philip, which includes an educational nature center, hiking trails, picnic grounds, and even a model aircraft flying field, all to the benefits of the region and our state. In addition, waterways utilized by migrating endangered waterfowl were protected and enhanced to support the survival of water bird species for current and future generations. Whereas Mayor Johnson's active participation in support of SWANK's initiatives have benefited the agency's residents from lower costs due to the agency being able to quickly repay all of its debts as well as innovations in technologies such as CNG fueled vehicles and total recycling containers stemming from lower operating costs and the reorganization of the agency. Whereas SWANK residents have benefited financially long-term by ensuring that competition in the waste industry can flourish in our region due to the existence of our independent transfer station that is open to all waste haulers. This competition keeps costs competitive and spurs innovation. And whereas Mayor Johnson continues to strengthen his Elk Grove Village community. I wish he had more enthusiasm. Just doesn't seem to have the enthusiasm. And the mission of the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County, through his forward-thinking, innovative efforts to promote premier service and programs to their residents. Now therefore be it resolved by the board of directors of the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County as follows. Section 1, that the board of directors of the agency, on behalf of all citizens served by the agency, some 900,000, do hereby acknowledge and congratulate and thank Mayor Craig Johnson on his many successes, achievements in longstanding public service, and convey to him our very best wishes for his continued health and happiness. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval according to law. And it's my pleasure to present the mayor with this resolution commemorating our thanks and our congratulations. Thank you.
Great man. George brings up something, hang on, he brings up something. Was this probably in the early, late 90s, early 2000s? What happened was, we were moving away from Bartlett. And thank you, that, like Matt just said, you're coming here for a SWANK. Thank you. It was probably late 90s, early 2000s. And the towns literally, the 2000s, we put millions of dollars into that project. And when we were moving away to go the different direction, we didn't think, we wouldn't have gotten our money back. We would not have gotten our money back. So, I worked with Pate Philip, our state senator at the time, and Pate, Henry Hyde, our congressman. And they both knew I did not get along good with Denny Hester. Even though both were wrestlers, turns out I was right, but that's a different story. We didn't get along well. So, I worked with Pate and mostly Pate and Henry a little bit to work with Denny to get us the money, to make the towns whole. Because we were all sweating. And you're talking back then, millions of dollars, and there's millions for some for each town. That was really going to be a ding to the community. Because we went through some tough times, recessions going through and all that. So, we were able to get that money back. And I don't forget the meeting. It was like Christmas for all of us because we had like salvation. It came to us and all that. So, it went well. But I, George, thank you. You know, it was a thing that was good for all of us, went well. And your friendship and SWANK's great job it's done for all the years. I can't thank you for your leadership because you're the driving force that keeps it going. So, behalf of Elk Grove, we say thank you to you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the memory.
Thank you.
You can't go without these. Again, we got packets for children up here for you.
My doctor, thank you.
Oh, it's the dark chocolate. No excuses. Fights cancer, fights heart disease.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George, you have a safe drive back.
Thank you.
But yeah, that is a true story. I could not meet with Denny Hester because he and I did not, that was because of a different issue, the airport and stuff too. But he and I did not get along and turned out I was right, but that's a different story. So, that was very nice, Matt. Thank you, my friend. Yes, I call you Romo too. I apologize. You know what happened today? I saw Ray out walking his dog. That's why I probably stuck my head and all that. Okay, with that said, move on. Trustees report. Trustee Bush.
Youth Commission report. On the 4th of August, we had a teen splash party. Over 200 students were there. I want to thank the police department and the park district, as well as Tammy and Jeff who were there. And, you know, the best part was the students, a lot of pleases, a lot of thank yous. Had a good time. Appreciate the lifeguards coming and giving a little bit of overtime. Some other things going on in the world of youth. They reached out to the students at Elk Grove High School. We'll be participating in the parade. There's a big giant balloon that we need to hold down. And I guess if you don't have enough people, then those people and the balloon will all float away. So, we're going to get involved in that. And then today, reached out to Prince of Peace Church. You'll see some of our students, just right on the corner of Devon and Arlington Heights Road, where they always have the pumpkin sales. We'll be moving, what is it, 1,000 pumpkins?
Yes.
Yes, so we use high school labor to move those pumpkins. And it all kind of relates together because at the end of the year, there's, you know, youth commission scholarships. And so, we're trying to encourage our students' leadership and service to, you know, earn those scholarships and become better citizens in the community. And then one other event's happening here next week. The human geography courses at Elk Grove High School are coming in to learn about government. I know Mayor Johnson's meeting with one of the classes. Trustee Jerish is going to do another one and talk about why we got involved in municipal government and promote citizenship among the students. So, that's what's going on with the youth in Elk Grove.
And we're counting on some of your young people for the parade?
Yes, that's, yeah, the balloons. We've got to hold out balloons.
Because Laura's saying you're going to...
We're going to come, we're going to come through. Nobody's floating away.
You're going to see the high school kids floating away on them.
No, no, no. Yeah. My son and some of his friends are already excited about doing that.
Oh, good.
Holding down Scooby Doo, I think is...
No, no. Scooby, don't mention this year's.
No, no.
It's a surprise.
Scooby was last year.
Last year's Scooby Doo.
I got a picture of it. It's huge and...
It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, we don't want any incidents.
Just like watching Macy's Thanksgiving Parade. You'll see that in Elk Grove. Looking forward to that. Appreciate it. And they all get a free meal afterwards.
Beautiful.
I said, the only thing is no beer tickets to the young people.
Okay.
We give to the older ones, not the young ones.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you very much. Move on now to trustee Miller.
Thank you. Many people ask how can I get involved and whether it's serving at pads or volunteering in the village somehow. The Community Character Coalition is one organization that anybody can join and learn how to volunteer and give back to the community. The Community Character Coalition will be 20 years old this year in September. And we are celebrating in two different ways. One is an invitation-only breakfast for different officials. But another way is for the families here in Elk Grove. And it's free. It's on September 24th. And it's about service projects and what service projects can you get involved in? And it's whether it's making dog toys or writing a letter to a patriot and sending that letter into packages for patriots, whether it's making a placemat for the Kenneth Young Center or the respite program. So, it's about service projects. And if you're interested, there will be more information in the newsletter coming up. But I do want to talk about the Community Character Coalition because it's a great organization. Joe is, trustee Bush is in it. And it's just something that it's giving back to. So, I wanted to give them a plug for their 20th anniversary this year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Miller. Trustee Schmidt.
Yes, since our last meeting, I was a little bit busy with sister cities. We met with several doctors that attended a medical conference in Sicily in June. And we talked about their experience there and potential of bringing some doctors over here from Sicily sometime in early or mid 2024. We're also working with our school out in our sister city to bring students here in November. This will be our first student exchange since 2019. It's not because of COVID. So, we're working on that and hopefully we'll have those students come here and that our students will go to Sicily in March of 2024. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Jerish.
I wanted to thank all the residents who have volunteered and stepped up to our July newsletter request regarding the pads program. As Pastor gave his invocation tonight, it looks like we're going to be able to reopen. So, great citizens in Elk Grove to step up to the cause. They still do need help. So, if you have any interest in still participating, you can reach out to myself or Christus Victor. I also attended a neighborhood watch meeting at the end of July and had an awesome demonstration by one of our drone pilots through the fire department and learned a lot about what the drones do here. And we got to see the infrared capabilities and how that can help our firefighters as they're putting out fires. They can identify places that might still be smoldering or still at risk. Also, one of our drones is capable of carrying a lifesaving device that can be administered to people in, you know, water rescue. So, that was kind of cool. I also attended the retirement of Officer Maglio. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Jerish. Last but not least, trustee Prakno.
Thank you. Just want to remind everyone that we still have the farmer's market going on every Saturday out here in the village parking lot from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's a wonderful, it's a wonderful experience. There's plenty of things going on at the farmer's market, just to name a few. We have weekly entertainment, activities for the children. There are booths that sell produce, bakery items, dog treats, cheese, fresh flowers. We have a knife sharpener and we have handmade purses. And that's just to name some, a few of our vendors. So, there's a little bit of everything for everybody. Every Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. right outside here. Please consider stopping by and being part of the fun. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. One thing I want to add, since we, especially since we got a couple new trustees, you know, once in a while, about once a year or so, we do a town hall meeting. We're talking, we may be looking to do another town hall meeting this fall. And the main thing, there's a lot of things going on. And that set the record straight. We talk about Facebook all the time. If you want to hear false information, go on Facebook. It'll give you a chance to get the real facts. Whether it's the Repollo subdivision issue or the new shopping center or data centers, whatever you want. We're looking to do that sometime this fall. And we'll get more information out to you at the next board meeting. But it's definitely something, we want to make sure we get things done. And again, we encourage, we invite, we'll send a letter invitation to those on Facebook that seem to just make things up. Come here, see us, sit down with us, and talk to us face to face. They probably won't do it, as our friend back there should not have said yes. They probably won't do it because they know what they're saying is not right. But we want to make sure we get the facts out. Because this village has so much good going on, so many things happening in a positive way. We want to make sure we keep those words out there. Again, we're not shy about anything. We're open to anybody. We'll talk to you, you know. People call and talk all the time. People call the house. We always get back to them. We always talk to them. Yes.
Did you want to follow up? I don't think we mentioned the coffee that we had and the wonderful...
Well, that's an example. Thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee Prakno's right. We had a coffee back on August 5th. And it was by far the biggest coffee we had. We had more chairs out. People almost came in waves. And it's very informative. So many people thank us afterwards. Thank you. We didn't know that because it's informal. Our town halls are informal. You don't have to give us what you want to ask us in advance. You come up and you say... You come up and you say anything you want. I mean, Tom Robb comes every time saying, "Mayor, why are you so good-looking?" I say, "I don't know, Tom. I tried to figure it out." But Tom always asks the same question. So, you know, we're trying to do it. But seriously, we know the coffees are getting so crowded now that these go well with the community. So, we'll be announcing shortly. That's going to be happening again. And it went well. But now, I know Trustee Jerish says it's because of the bakery goods we have, why they come. But I'm sure that's part of it. So, but we're looking forward. Trustee Proctno's right. We have good crowds at that. We're going to keep doing that. And these will be televised. The town hall meeting is televised. So, the whole community gets a chance to see it. Again, it's open, just like our coffees. And we had questions from all over the place. And some very good points are brought up. Some things we've helped people on. We changed things because of what they bring up. Other things, we set the record straight. And a lot of people thank us afterwards. "Mayor, we didn't know that." Well, what do you mean? Well, and they say it. We saw on Facebook, it said this. Don't believe everything you hear on Facebook. Believe about 1% of what you see on Facebook. We'll give you the true facts. And they're much happier afterwards. So, again, with that, it'll be coming up. And we'll be talking about that further. That concludes Mayor Trustees' report. Accounts payable warrant. Let's start first with Mr. Nikobak's paycheck, July 31st, 2023.
Mayor, I move that we approve the accounts payable warrant for July 31st, 2023 in the amount of $4,809,849.07.
Second?
We have motion by Trustee Proctno, a second by Trustee Jerish. And yes, a seven cents is Mr. Nikobak's paycheck. So, it is in there. Lori, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Jerish? Aye. Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Proctno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Motion passes seven, nothing. August 1st, 2023?
I move that we approve the accounts payable warrant for August 1st, 2023 in the amount of $286,295.03.
Second?
We have motion by Trustee Proctno, a second by Trustee Miller. All, let the record show unanimous approval, five to nothing. August 15th, 2023?
I move that we approve the accounts payable warrant for August 15th, 2023 in the amount of $356,925.06.
Second?
We have motion by Trustee Proctno, a second by Trustee Jerish. And without objection, record the vote as please demonstrated, five to nothing. We move on tonight to consent agenda. You can tell it's summertime, right, Mr. Roan? Is A is Alexandria through B, B, tough one, as in BB King?
Oh.
We're impressed.
So, see, Tom, I'm not only good-looking, I can be good with the letters too. I've got the whole package.
I thought you were going to say Bridget Pardo, but that was just me.
I won't even go there because I could, that's good though. That is good.
Thank you.
But that's way before...
BB King is...
That caught you off guard, didn't it? Because Bridget Pardo, you got to take the letters out. Whereas BB King, BB are right there. Except for the dots.
Apparently, you've been thinking about it.
I'm always thinking. Not very long ago, I just saw this tonight.
I understand that.
Okay. So, we have consent agenda items. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
We have motion by Trustee Miller, a second by Trustee Proctno, who for 20-some years never made one motion. And now she motions us to death.
That's my first second motion.
Ever?
Ever.
See?
She's getting well.
Getting good. Okay. Anybody here to talk about the consent agenda tonight? Any trustees, staff, nothing? Without objection, record the votes, please demonstrated, five to nothing. Move on now to regular agenda, which we have none. Plan Commission, Mr. Roan?
We have one item on Plan Commission. On July 17th, the Plan Commission met to hear PC Docket 23-6 to consider a petition for an automotive repair shop, special use in an I-1 industrial zoning district at 670 Lunt. It was the consensus of the Plan Commission by a 7-0 vote to recommend approval of the special use.
Okay. Petitioners here tonight? You're fine.
Yes, we are.
You're fine. Thank you. Any questions, board members? If not, I need a motion to have attorney prepare necessary documents?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, we have motion by Trustee Jerish, a second by Trustee Schmidt. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show unanimous approval. So, you're all set?
Thank you very much. No need to come back.
No, you don't have to come back. It's mere formality.
Can I take one minute?
Sure, by all means. If you don't mind...
My name is Paul Pollock. I'm the attorney for the applicant.
Thank you.
I do a lot of zoning throughout this area. I know, want to compliment your staff, your inspectors. They met with us one time at the site, came up with their comments, reasoned, reasoned them out. We complied, and we're here.
And how does...
Very rare.
How'd the Plan Commission meeting go?
Went very well because we had the support of the staff. And thank you all.
No, I thank you for the compliment. That's why I appreciate. I mentioned how well our people do. We're business friendly. We want to be beyond business friendly. So, thank you very much. Gentlemen, we wish you nothing but the best of success.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time. Sorry, it was a long time. We had more things than we normally do. I apologize for late.
Have a wonderful evening. Everybody be healthy.
Thank you, you too.
Take care. Hang on, gentlemen. Hang on. Hang on.
Can't leave without chocolates, I'm thinking. That's just what I'm thinking. I don't know, but...
My wife will love you.
You guys cannot go. Sorry to all of you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Everyone's home happy in Elk Grove. So...
There you go. Thank you. And best of luck.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Take care.
Good night.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
So, Mr. Roan, that begs the question. How would you pay that guy?
A lot.
Anything else under Plan Commission or Zoning Board?
Nothing under Plan Commission and nothing under Zoning Board of Appeals.
Very good. Thank you. Now, you know why you're so happy, don't you? Who was that guy? What's he do?
The attorney?
The attorney.
Yeah.
How do they get paid?
When things happen.
By the hour.
Yeah, right. Oh.
That was an hour before he got to you. He loved us. He's going, "Todd, I wish it was a little longer." No, I'm joking. I'm joking, everyone. I'm only kidding.
But it's true.
You want to have a tag day sale for you? I did pay you six cents, didn't I?
Seven.
No, there's taxes. Okay, move on. Recycling Waste Committee. Trustee Frank, he's not here. Any report for anybody?
No.
Seeing none, hearing none? Trustee Frank, do a round. Maybe you can fill in?
No.
Okay. JPZ Committee, Trustee Proctno.
No report.
Capital Improvements Committee, Trustee Schmidt?
Just want to report that the road construction in our residential area has been completed on Crest, correct? On Claremont. And they're working on Crest and also in the area around Bird School. They want those areas completed before school starts. And then when they get done with that, they're going to be moving to the locations that are identified in our newsletter on the west side of town. That concludes my report.
And Kobe, I got to say, they go into a street now, they do so much curbs, so many... I mean, what a difference than just three, four years ago. I mean, there's some streets that go down, almost every curb is taken out. So, we're doing the new expansion that we talked about and appreciate. It's kind of a pain sometimes. Because I hear people call me. I said, "Well, park one block over." "Well, then I got to walk." But you're getting all new curbing in your driveway in front of you. I said, "It's worth for a few days to walk." Yeah, I guess you're right, Mayor. Okay. But they're doing a heck of a job on that.
You know, I was out the other day on a couple of the streets near Bird School. And some of the residents came out and were thanking us for this work. They're very happy with the work that's been conducted.
You guys are doing a good job. It's noticeable. So, thank you.
And kudos. I was out walking the dog and I saw the water main break at Lilac and Crest. The guy's doing, I mean, they're right there on the spot. They got it dug out. They've got it filled up. They make it safe for the neighborhood. Just...
Summer's a little nicer than about six months from now. When it's about 20 below and they're out there, but they did a good job. Thank you. Cable Television Committee, Trustee Jerish?
Elk Grove TV is installing a new playback system this week. And it will greatly improve our video and audio playback. It's also going to be a new programming guide and improve our streaming capabilities. So, this should be complete by Sunday. So, your patience as we work through it this week. And come Monday, things will be back to normal and ready to go. But this meeting is live, so...
And Trustee Jerish?
That concludes my report.
You're on the Cable Television Committee.
Yes.
If there's any way through meetings, whatever you go, as time goes on, if you could ever get them, where they could put on what shows on your TV are coming up on Channel 6, would be great. You know, if you go on normal TV, Channel 9, Cub Game, WGN News, you see that, The Times, for some reason...
Ah, One on the Bottom?
Well, you know, when you go on the guide, you press guide, and they tell you what's coming up on Channel 7, whatever. If that could ever be fixed, you'd be a goddess here in the village.
Ooh.
So...
Where's your channel?
Well, I'm all over it.
Okay. We'll see. We'll see. Now, remember, if you don't do it, it's the Parade Committee for you. So...
Oh, okay.
Help me out, Russ.
You all go for that, Tammy. See what has not been a rookie anymore. See how it helps?
I know.
Okay.
Maybe she could put the Flim Flam Man on there, the movie.
Whoa.
Okay, in the audience. How many people have ever seen the movie The Flim Flam Man?
See?
With George C. Scott?
See, yeah.
George C. Scott. No one?
Just you. You're the only one in the room.
Emo, come on. I had faith in you. Go on your computer, look up Flim Flam Man, George C. Scott. You'll love the movie. Trust me. Okay, Youth Committee, Trustee Bush?
First of all, it's streaming zero places, The Flim Flam Man. But I think it is on YouTube, you can find it. So, I got really excited. This is the first time I'm giving a report. So, I kind of said everything I was going to say before.
You did.
So, no need to repeat. We still had that teen splash party and it was great. That's my report.
Okay. Rookies.
Yeah, I'm learning.
Information Committee, Trustee Miller?
So, I have a couple of reminders that have popped up on Instagram. If you haven't, don't have Instagram. It's also been on some emails. And also on the village website, PACE has started a registration ID. Actually, not started. We're the last ones to join. We talked about this at the last month. But we do need, if you are a PACE rider, you do need to fill out a registration form. You get an ID. Those forms can be found at Sheila Ray, the Park District, the library, and here at Village Hall. So, those issues that may arrive due to some, some kind of situation with PACE, they're easier to be resolved if you have an ID registration. So, please fill out those forms. Also, there is going to be an open house tomorrow at the Public Works Facility. That is August 16th from 4:00 to 7:00. And the reason they're having an open house is to talk about the improvements on Tawny Road. And Tawny Road, there's, it's not about building new facilities on Tawny Road. It's about how improvements are going to be made on Tawny Road. So, from 4:00 to 7:00, August 16th, open house at the Public Works Facility. The Citizens Police Academy is looking for enrollees or applicants to learn more about, obviously, our police department and how things work and the involvement with the community. Those applications are due by, are starting, excuse me, Friday, September 1st, and due on September, am I right? September 6th? Or is that when we start? I think that's when we start, is September 6th through October 25th. The deadline is September 1st, starting now. Okay, deadline is September 1st. So, if you want to get involved again and learn about what our police department does, this is a great opportunity to do that. Those are Wednesday nights, 6:30 to 9:00. And the next Coffee with the Board is the first Saturday in November. Fourth. Got it. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The Police Academy, it's amazing. Scott, you went through it, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Doesn't it do, doesn't it open your eyes to what it really goes on?
It does.
A little different perspective on the police after that?
Yeah, I attended also.
It's, it really gives you, you appreciate, one, all you do, and two, the technology and the mind, the thought behind what you do. It's very good. And real quick on Tawny Road, again, the Tawny Road project is, we're rebuilding Tawny Road. It's going to be rebuilt. It's like a 17, 18 million dollar project. And at Elk Grove Boulevard, Touey on the other side, and Tawny, we're going to be installing a different intersection. It's, is it called Michigan Left?
Yes, sir.
Michigan Left Turn System, which is, we have one over by 390 and... Meacham. So, there's one out there already, and it works beautifully. So, we're going to be working, showing that. So, if you're interested in all what's going on, come by and see it. They'll have all the diagrams. They'll answer any questions. It really makes, it really, it eye-opening to see what's going to be happening. So, that's from 4:00 to 7:00. Plus, you get to see our beautiful Public Works Facility. So, it's a win. But no ice machine that day, right?
We'll turn it off.
Okay.
We need cola ice?
Yeah.
No cola ice.
No cola ice. As I said, turn off. No, turn it on. Okay, we move on. Business Leaders Forum, Trustee Schmidt?
Yes, on July 19th, members of the Business Leaders Forum met with the owner of Impact Printers located at 775 Touey Avenue. The gentleman, Sean, purchased the company in 2021, although the company's been around since 1984. Here in the village, they started on Tawny Road. They moved for a while on Brumford and on Higgins. And now they're on a, on Touey Avenue. It's a full-service printing business. And Sean has showed up. Actually, he had our last two coffees with the mayor and the board. And he's very outgoing. And we wish him success. It'll be a story about his business in one of our upcoming newsletters. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Health and Community Services, Trustee Proctno?
No report.
Personnel Committee, Trustee Schmidt?
No report.
Wow, that went fast.
Yeah.
Are you ready for the draft? Are you ready for the draft? Friday before Labor Day.
Okay.
Okay. Airport update. Still working on trying to get the Fly Choir Program. More importantly, our Fly Choir Program, put together by JDA, to be part of the review process with FAA. We're very optimistic that ONCC in Chicago will do it. And let's hope it gets done so we make sure we have the fairest flight distribution at nighttime around the communities. Parade Committee, we talked about earlier, September 16th. Midsummer concert classic series. Mr. Nikobak, we've done last year. What's your lineup next year?
I have no idea. We don't have one, do we? What?
No idea. Clueless. Okay.
It's unusual.
Being clueless? Okay. Hopefully soon, we'll be having that out as soon as we can. Looking forward to it. Special Events Committee, next one is Oktoberfest, we talked about. No items of liquor commission. Report from our beloved village manager, Matthew Roan?
No report.
That's it? After that buildup?
That is it.
That kind of buildup?
It's as good as I got.
His head is still because of what the attorney said, right? We're going to have to open board doors when he leaves tonight. Yeah, I know. Okay. From our beloved village clerk, Lori Murphy.
No report.
Okay. Any, well, first off, unfinished business? Lift your leg up. Yeah, there's nothing there as usual. New business item from board members?
Do you want to remind people that they can buy their Oktoberfest tickets online?
Yes. If you go online on elk Grove.org/Oktoberfest, you can buy $10 worth of tickets for $8. You got to buy it before September 5th?
Yes, and I think it starts a little bit later. I think it's 28.
Oh, is that ready yet?
Sorry.
No, it's fine.
But we won't have a board meeting, so it's...
No, no, no. So, from August 28th to September... Take your time. You're fine. Caroline, relax. Only 18 million people watching. It's not a big deal. Well, starting August 28th on, go on our website.
28, yes.
Until what date?
Until... September 11th.
Okay. So, August 20th to 9/11, by line, they get the tickets and they go to the event, right?
Yes.
So, you go to the event. They'll have an envelope with your tickets in there. And you save 20%. So, it should go very well. Again, it's very, it's, the meals are subsidized, the beer is subsidized. So, it's very family-friendly pricing. So, it's good that way. Big Kids Fest, so it'd be a great event. No, we have a meeting before that.
Do we?
The 12th.
Oh.
So, we should have one. So, get them and enjoy it. But thank you on that.
But by then, you can't order the tickets.
No, it's too late, right?
Right.
Okay. Any comments from the public tonight? Helen, how are we doing? I think I see in October...
Yeah, I think it's 24th.
24th.
Yeah, I think it's 24th.
See, that's even, I keep that. I don't know who this guy is, but I remember that date. That's important. By the way, he filled in very advertly for you at the coffee. Yes, he did. Very nice. Actually, he took home like two dozen donuts, he said. He's bringing home for you, he said. But, yeah, I know. That's what I thought, so. Okay. Emo, how we doing? Four? Four?
The way Mr. Petzel used to answer.
Excellent, four?